Good evening, folks. Looking to resume the regular meeting of council for Monday, Ju—our, uh, August 29th? I want to go back up to June. Um, looking for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation. This is a time for those of you in the audience to, uh, make comment at the microphone. By all means, step forward. It's your time, not the presenter's.
Gail Johnston, 245 Shippsville Place. I'm here tonight to address Beach Food Fridays. Item 6.2.5 on tonight's agenda. I was disappointed that this weekly event was started without any neighborhood consultation, and then morphed from Beach Food Fridays to include Saturdays once again, without input from those most affected nearby residents. However, now that there have been over nineteen successful events, as Sandra Russell has pointed out, it's time to evaluate and fine tune the event if it is to continue next year. I would like to see this council approve a combination of options one and two, now that the trial is almost finished. I know that residents have talked about the increased noise and traffic. I have seen and heard firsthand the increase, especially on Friday and Saturday nights, although not sure that the increase is related to Beach—Beach Food Fridays. Perhaps the music level could be lowered and the hours reduced. We all know how the sound travels near the water. Maybe a bylaw officer should be down there to keep the traffic moving and prohibit cars from parking on the inner lagoon side of the road. Perhaps food trucks are booked for every three hours, or even leave sooner if they are continually running out of food. Perhaps a laminated notice should be given to each truck to post in their window. It could say, "If you would like the—this food truck service to continue at the beach, please use the garbage cans provided." I think, weather permitting, that the Beach Food Fridays could continue for a few more weeks. But before Sandra or Ian create their final public—their final report, a public consultation must take place. And I understand you have received a few letters, so perhaps those are the people you should start with. I would like to see lagoon resident ideas included, from this year's experience, into that final report. Thank you.
Uh, 288 Porchmouth Drive. Just to follow on what Gail was saying about the, um, food trucks. I'm not against them or for them, really. Problem is, I see problems with them. And, uh, as she says, option one, option two. Uh, most of us, I don't think knew that it was option one, or option two, or option anything. We all of a sudden saw food trucks. But, uh, there are some problems that come with them, the way they're set up now. One of them is congestion. Uh, they're set up right at the intersection of a three-way stop, the washroom, permanent washroom building, and just around the corner. That's a very—probably the busiest place on the lagoon right now. And, uh, that's where everybody is parking on both sides of the street. One side is no parking, but they're parking there, facing different directions. People milling around and walking around. Uh, no—and no really any pedestrian or vehicle patrol or control in the area to be seen. Uh, and I find that, uh, rather dangerous, actually. Uh, mostly for the pedestrians, but, uh, for anybody. I wouldn't—certainly wouldn't want to hit one of them. Um, the mess on the beach, the papers, the overflowing garbage, that kind of thing is visible. It's there, and it can't be denied. I don't know if the food trucks now, um, are required to bring their own garbage pails and take their own garbage away, or if they just leave it for Colwood to pick up in those little tiny, uh, bins that are provided down there. Um, but I do know, next day, because all the birds are chased away during the actual beer—uh, trucks being open because of the noise, and the sanctuary, there's coming around the corner, but they go back and they're eating the french fries and all the other things they shouldn't be eating that are left on the ground. And of course, that just results in a mess on your windshield when you're driving by, or on your patio when you're sitting outside. And, of course, it doesn't do any good for the birds, either. Um... Ha! Got two blank cards, I said. Here's Rob—Rob's input. Uh, the boom boxes—I live on Porchmouth Drive. I can hear them at my house. They're not overly loud or overly offensive, but I can hear them. And I imagine the people between me and the actual boom box, uh, they may be ones that wrote letters, I don't know, but they are loud. And it picks up on the lagoon and just bounces off the trees, and there it is. Uh, something about turning them off, or turn—not off, but down, and maybe facing a different direction or something, so you can still have the atmosphere of the music and the trucks and all that would be an appropriate thing to consider. The, um... We went through a whole bunch of things down on the lagoon, which is surprise—which surprises me why these, uh, food trucks were allowed to proceed the way they did. Um, if you remember, the speed limit got reduced to forty K from fifty. Um, they got rid of—the we got rid of, you got rid of, the racing skulls that were out on the—on the lagoon because of the safety boat factor upsetting, uh, the birds. Well, I haven't seen anything upsetting the birds like this thing, uh, or these things, uh, that's always ever been there. And when you emphasize that it was a bird sanctuary, again, I'm not for or against bird sanctuaries, but since it's been designated one, having something like this come in seems to me to be counterproductive from what you were trying to do with the bird sanctuary. Um... The competition, uh, what Gail was saying, and I'm not in business, uh, here in Colwood, so it doesn't affect me, but I'm wondering, are the licenses that these guys have to buy the same as what, uh, like a Subway up in Colwood Corners would have to buy, uh, to operate? And, uh, are they—are they faced with the same taxes and—or is it unbalanced competition? Or is it balanced competition? Because I know a lot of people would stop at McDonald's, or the Subway, or Wendy's, or any of those places up there, bring their lunch down to the beach, sit on a log, eat it, put their stuff in the trash bin, and leave. Now, if this is—I don't know if the owners of those businesses are even aware of these food trucks, but if they aren't, uh, should they be made aware of it? And if they are, have they been talked to about it? And if they have an objection or no objection? Because I think it's important not to drive businesses in Colwood too far away, especially the existing ones. Um, can't go to length for everything. And again, as Gail said, there's, uh, there's a real need, I think, to canvass the neighborhoods and, uh, and the, as I said, the businesses that already exist. See what people think. Start close to it, move your way out of it. I mean, everybody in Colwood should have a say. There's more than just Colwoodites, whatever we're called, that use it, I'm sure, because that Squamal Lagoon is a very popular place for people from all over Victoria. So I don't know how far you'd want to go in canvassing, but certainly the residents of Colwood, and specifically the residents that are directly impacted by, uh, by that place. And as I said, I'm not against it. I'm all for it. It's just that there could be some tweaking done and some adjustments done. Moving the trucks down the causeway where it's wider, where we wouldn't have to take so much parking away, and, uh, wouldn't be so congested by the, uh, by the intersection. That's a thought. Uh, move the—yeah, just move them down to a wider section of the causeway. And, uh, or, if it comes to it, I suppose, move them all together. I wouldn't want to see that, and I wouldn't even suggest where they would go. I think it's, uh, probably somebody's got a pretty good idea. It's just a matter of what Gail said, is going through, uh, option one and option two, coming up with something that can—people can live with, and, uh, go from there, rather than sort of, uh, just bang, out of the gate. So that's it. Thank you.
Hello. I came tonight on behalf of the Coast Collective, but I also live on the lagoon. I love it.
Could I get your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Deborah Serneky on Hatley. All right. C-Z-E-R-N-E-C-K-Y. Great Canadian name. Um, I love the food trucks down there, and I want to compliment the city for doing a great job every morning cleaning the beach. I walk the beach every morning. Um, I don't find anything wrong with the traffic, and I enjoy the music. And yes, maybe at ten o'clock, tone it down. Anyways, I think it's a great thing that is going on, on the lagoon, and it's wonderful seeing all those people out there and families. Thank you.
I'm, uh, Tuli Tula Panelle. I have, uh, lived out here for just over ten years from Victoria. Uh, my biggest concern is all the heavy traffic that's going on, um, that's getting out of control. I find, uh, you got all these new houses coming in, they're little shoebox houses on little stamp-sized properties. Um, I have a hard time getting off my street half the time with so much traffic, and with school starting up, um, it's just going to get even heavier. Uh, and with the gravel pit with all the twenty-three houses, uh, twenty-three hundred homes coming in, I think it's, uh, it's just going to even multiply, and then our roads aren't accommodated for that. Um, uh, and all these houses, or the trees that are all coming down. I'm a big animal, uh, lover, activist. Uh, all the deer are getting chased out, and you know, they've got a place to—they got nowhere to go but some people's yards and eating their flowers and stuff, so, uh, you know, deers are being called out, and, um, how fair is it to them? They have a right to be here as well. Uh, I think we're overpopulated. Um, and, uh, when I moved out here, I wanted to get away from all the hustle and bustle from the city, and now it's just starting to look just like Victoria. Um, I'm a—I'm a—I'm a shift worker. I work, uh, I don't get home till after midnight, and I walk my dog. Uh, when I come home, uh, up my chosen road, there's no sidewalk from Wishart to Painter Road, so you're basically having to walk on the gravel. And there's some people who are driving well over the speed limit, and it's—it's a dark corner right in that area, and I'm, you know, it's a concern. Somebody might get hit, might not. Um, but, you know, these little subdivisions, they have sidewalks on both sides of the road. Um, I just find it's—it's just—we're finding a little overpopulated, and, uh, all these big trees that are coming down, they look so bare now in—in certain areas, and there's no room to put the big trees back in there, so, uh, I'm—I'm just thinking that's, uh, a little bit much, um, and might have to move further into the country. It's—it's, uh, to get away from all the hustle. But the more you go, the more you're going to have to deal with trying to get back into town, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Judith Collington, thirty-three, thirty-eight, Daiswink. I wasn't going to speak, but I thought I'd add my voice in favor of Beach Food Fridays. I think it's been a huge success. Um, of course, there are always sort of tweaks and improvements to be made. Um, you know, if litter is a concern, then, you know, maybe we do—do a bit more. Um, I think there's also, um, as Elsie pointed out, um, in the letter, an opportunity to do—since we've got all these people coming, to—to do some more education on the fact that the migrant bird sanctuary is right there. Um, and, you know, let's get people understanding that and appreciating it. Um, but yes, it's a wonderful event. I would love to see it keep going. Um, I've been down a number of times, and there have always been people down there enjoying themselves, so kudos. Team.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Seeing none, then we will move on with this evening's agenda. Uh, Mayor's message comes next, and there are a number of, um, items before us. This is our first meeting since the, uh, summer break officially, so I have a few proclamations to take note of. First one being Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is the month of September. So the City of Colwood and I, on their behalf, have issued a proclamation. In recognition of support to patients, families, and professionals leading the fight against childhood cancer, I, Carol Hamilton, Mayor of the City of Colwood, do hereby proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Colwood, and recognize the gold ribbon as the symbol of childhood cancer. I encourage all citizens to honor those young people who have lost their lives in this devastating disease to join the fight against childhood cancer. So when you see those little gold, um, ribbon memos, that's what we're talking about. Uh, further to that is a proclamation for Kids Sports Week, which runs from September tenth to seventeenth. Uh, again, do hereby proclaim September tenth to seventeenth to be Kids Support Week in the City of Colwood. Uh, they have a number of—of, um, missions that, uh, they work in a well—well-organized, uh, unit, uh, providing service within their community. Um, other things that are coming out is, I want to thank Councilor Chong for writing in this year's, again, uh, tour to Victoria. Uh, she took on a forty-five kilometer challenge, and, uh, it was, uh, on our behalf, so I—my legs were sore, I could tell you. Um, so thank you. Uh, the other one is, you will see, and there is one on the back wall there that says "Discover" about it, and, um, I think that's the only one that's in the room. There are banners that are being installed along the Whale Road, uh, strip that were created through a collaboration with Coast Collective and Island Illustrator Society using images from a new Colwood-themed coloring book called A Colorful Coast. So we're starting on Whale Road with those, and there'll be other ones over the next week or so, so, uh, maybe we can run a spot—the—spot the banner campaign on that one. Um, September tenth, we have Royal Bay Beachfront opening, uh, from the Royal Bay Development. September eleventh, ovarian cancer walk at Royal Roads. September eighteenth, the Seaside Festival, uh, which includes free site admission at Fort Rod Hill, inaugural paint-in at the Fort Art Contest, live entertainment with the big "We" and—I'm not even saying that one—um, music, food trucks—
Oh, come on.
Uh, no. I am not Welsh. You go—you try.
"We"?
No, that one.
Cookie lich.
Whatever.
Oh, cookie lich. There you go.
There you go. Horse-drawn carriage rides, kids' crafts, activities, West Shore Parks and Recreation will be sponsoring on that. Interactive heritage displays such as wool spinning, tin-type photos, uh, vintage dress-up and selfie station, so, uh, Disguise the Limit, our folks are—are providing a costume station. Trolley from the West Shore Park and Ride, uh, to the site, uh, sponsored by Wilson's Transportation. Historic and ghostly tours with the infamous John Adams of Discover the Past, uh, who interestingly started his career at Fort Rod Hill doing heritage and history. Uh, platoon challenge, scavenger hunt hosted by Fort Rod Hill, puppet shows, uh, Tickles the Clown, and a number of other events that day. So it's a full day from eleven till four. Certainly hope to see you all there, and cost—period costume is welcome. Um, September twenty-sixth through thirtieth, many of our council members are attending UBCM, which is this year in Victoria, so there'll be a influx of, uh, local politicians from around the province, uh, descending on Victoria, so maybe we might even get them out our way to show the—the, uh, wonderful community that we have. So there is an item on our agenda tonight to address the fact that we will not be, um, having our council meeting on the twenty-sixth, so we'll see that a little later in—in our agendas. Uh, anyone else from around council with something that's gone on this summer, besides Shark Week? We're all good? Okay, we're glad—we're glad that Counselor Nault made it back from last week's shark expedition, of which he didn't see any out there. Um, moving on for adoption of two sets of minutes this evening. Regular meeting of council July the eleventh, and the special meeting of council July—uh, August sixteenth, pardon me. All those in favor? Posed, motion carries? Uh, receipt of a number of minutes. Uh, there is a note on there, um, that we have a particular large group of them, so I'll carefully go through. Special committee of the whole February twenty-ninth, special committee of the whole March the second, intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issues January twenty-first, intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issues April twenty-first, planning and land use committee meeting February second, planning and land use June twenty-first, planning and land use July fifth, heritage commission April fourteenth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. That's what happens when you give staff time to catch up. Uh, presentations this evening. Our first one on the agenda is from Mr. Alf Birch, who is a volunteer with the Land Trust Alliance of B.C. Jill Robinson as well, I believe. Is Jill with you?
No, uh, Jill was not able to make it tonight, but, uh, let me introduce Kathy Armstrong, the executive director of the Land—uh, the Land Conservancy.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll, uh, speak for about five minutes, and then we'll handle any questions. Thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, speak to you all this evening. The purpose of, uh, our presentation is to seek support in principle, a letter of support from the City of Colwood, to, uh, encourage the province to move ahead with, uh, amendment of provincial legislation to allow local governments to participate on a fully voluntary basis in a property tax incentive program to encourage private landowners to place conservation covenants on their land where they have qualifying, uh, special ecological areas, sensitive areas, and so on. We're very glad to see in your official community plan and other documents the value that Colwood places on the environment, on environmentally sensitive areas, riparian areas, wetlands, uh, and connected greenways, and so on. All of those are very important objectives which make a community like yours a very attractive and livable, uh, location. However, we recognize, as I'm sure you do, that there is a limit to how much you can do as local politicians to put it—put that into effect. Park land costs money to acquire. There are limits to zoning such as development permit areas, and, uh, we know that some municipalities have run into problems where those become misperceived as, uh, too onerous. And, uh, there are, of course, tools, uh, through negotiations with developers at the time of subdivision applications, but all of those have—have certain limits that go with them. So we believe there is a very vital, important place for voluntary landowner conservation of special environmental areas. And in this part of the province, a lot of our, uh, sensitive areas are privately owned. So how are we going to encourage landowners to, uh, conserve their land long-term, um, in perpetuity? Well, conservation covenants provide an ideal tool for that, but there are various costs involved, both in developing and registering a covenant on title, and then the landowner is giving up development opportunities in the future in conserving their land. So there needs to be a way to provide some small incentives and recognition for landowners that, uh, that do that. Fortunately, we have a good example in the province of this kind of a program. The Island Trust, uh, legislation was amended about ten years ago, allowing the Island Trust and Island Trust Fund to implement a program called the Natural Area Protection Tax Exemption Program. This program has operated for about ten years quite successfully, and it allows, uh, landowners to receive a sixty-five percent reduction in their property taxes, uh, on land that is, uh, covered by a conservation covenant. So it's not a whole parcel, it's the area that's covered by the covenant, and it's only the land taxes on that portion that are reduced. But it's been a successful program. It has incentivized landowners to participate and, uh, place covenants on their—their properties. And there's been no, uh, abuse of the program, no, uh, sort of, uh, tax avoidance strategies or anything like that. These are our genuine conservation-minded, uh, landowners. Now, of course, the—the question arises, okay, who's paying for this? If we reduce taxes on some properties, how does this get paid for? Um, in some other provinces, uh, for example Nova Scotia, the province reimburses local governments for the cost of, uh, offering tax incentives of this kind. But the way the, uh, NAPTAP program operates in the Island Trust area is that there is a small tax shift that occurs. So just like with a heritage property, uh, where tax is reduced on one parcel, then everybody else in the tax area, whatever the—the particular tax is, pays a small additional amount of tax. That sounds a little bit dubious at a time when people are trying to limit taxes and and, uh, cost of living. But the, uh, analysis that's been done in the Island Trust area is that this amounts to somewhere between a few cents up to maybe a couple of dollars per property per year for those who are not participating. In other words, there's a reduction on those who place covenants on their lands. Everybody else pays in the order of maximum of a couple of dollars. That is far less than most landowners—landowners are going to notice in the changing tax situation regarding new developments, changing, uh, budgets for the various jurisdictions that draw on property tax revenues. And there have been no complaints in the Island Trust area for this kind of program. So although—we—we want to be frank, there is a—a tax shift, and—and, uh, somebody has to pay for that. The amount that is spread out is—is very small. And when you consider that in comparison with the amenity values that are being created, we are preserving valuable, uh, ecological areas, um, natural areas that make our communities more beautiful, and we bring into play the services of land trusts like the Land Conservancy or Habitat Acquisition Trust and others, who will mobilize volunteers to come out and help with the management of those lands and monitoring and so on, removing any requirement for municipalities to do so. Those are significant benefits that, uh, need to be, uh, kept in mind as well. This incentive was supported, uh, has been supported twice by UBCM resolutions of two thousand and eleven, and again last year, two thousand and fifteen. But as we know, um, government doesn't always act on—on these kind of resolutions, and so we're trying to build awareness and support amongst local governments for this initiative just through letters of support in principle. This would not in any way commit Colwood to participating in a program in the future. The way the legislation is, uh, expected is there would—there would need to be, at a later time when the program is in place, would need to be a specific decision by Colwood to—to participate if it was going to apply in—in your area. This also, uh, goes along very closely with—it is supported by work that the Ministry of Environment and other ministries are doing at provincial level under their species and ecosystems at risk. Uh, private landowner incentives is one of the, uh, mechanisms that they've identified as a high priority for protection of, uh, species and ecosystem—ecosystems at risk. So in conclusion, what we'd like to ask you to do is to consider writing a letter. I've given you, uh, I think it's in your packages, a sample letter that, uh, View Royal has provided. Uh, just, uh, just today, I received also a letter from the District of Highlands. They have approved a letter of support, expecting a letter also from, uh, the, uh, municipality of North Cowichin. So there's a number of municipalities and, uh, regional districts as well. We're going to be writing letters like this to express some support for the province to take a closer look at this. Again, it's completely voluntary, both for municipalities and for landowners, so, uh, we're just seeking your, uh, support for encouraging the province to take a closer look at it. Thank you very much.
Okay, and just before you go, Mr. Birch, I'll just open it to council if you had any direct questions to Mr. Birch at this point. Counselor Day.
Thank you. Just one question. Um, I'm familiar with the resolutions that have come forward at UBCM, uh, but I noticed in your presentation that it applies only to qualifying natural areas that are covered by a covenant, and I'm just wondering, um, who mandates those qualifications? It's the only wrinkle I could consider.
In the case of the Island Trust Fund, which is the best model that we have, um, those are—there are, um, a series of, uh, criteria that are mentioned in the legislation or—in the regulation anyway, uh, that—that identifies the types of land that would—would qualify. And then it's up to the Island Trust Fund in, uh, going to evaluate land, doing an environmental survey of the land. Does this in fact qualify under—under one of those, uh, kind of qualifications? It's—it's primarily for natural features. This would not be for, um, human heritage, uh, characteristics.
Thank you. Any others? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Um, I just want to use an example. So let's say, uh, we have a Mr. and Mrs. Smith who wish to—to do this. So now, uh, they do it, and they're getting a sixty-five percent rebate on the property. They—they live there for fifty years, they pass away, their children inherit the land. How onerous is it for them—for the children to then remove it out of the covenant?
It is onerous. It is not—covenants are intended to be in perpetuity. It is not, covenants are intended to be in perpetuity. So whether it's through an inheritance or a sale or whatever, the subsequent owners should be informed. Covenant is in place, and this does restrict development opportunities on the land.
But it's not impossible, is it? Is it impossible to get out of it?
I think not strictly legally impossible if there was mutual agreement. But the covenant holder would be, in most cases, a land trust, like Land Conservancy HAT or others, Nature Conservancy of Canada. Generally speaking, once the land is in a covenant, it is qualified because of legitimate reasons, they are not going to want to lightly wave that aside.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is an ask for us to also consider a letter of support. I would move that we write a letter of support for the resolution. Is there a seconder? Any further discussion? Counsel Martin?
Thank you. I won't support it until such time as staff can actually give some feedback, especially regarding financial implications and also if it's something within the mandate of, say, our official community plan and so on. So I'm comfortable with supporting it down the road. It's just I would prefer to actually have staff comment on it before. I would be interested in supporting it.
Any other comments? Call the question of those in favor. Opposed? Second item on the agenda, 4.3.2, Cindy Moyer, Executive Director, Coast Collective Arts. We have no documentation. Ms. Moyer?
Hello, thank you very much. And I'm gonna just have to sneak back here so I can see the screen go on. Our presentation has disappeared. Unfortunately, the people in the gallery won't be able to see it. But they'll be just here.
Mm-hmm.
She sits back there, she's still gonna need the video.
I don't think she's speaking.
Okay.
We, something will come up on this screen?
It's supposed to.
Oh.
There you go.
Yep.
And we don't have to join that. I'm gonna leave this, I think. There. Okay. I just have to sync up these two things.
Your worship for the audience's benefit, they won't be able to see the presentation. It's just for, I wanted to make sure they understood that, they won't see it.
Mm-hmm. It's a technological thing. She's working from a Mac computer on the presentation, and our system is PC, so if we don't do it in this way, we don't get anything at all, so. And, there we go. So hopefully you'll get some volume, folks.
Coast Collective is the West Shore's only community art center. It includes an art gallery, artisan gift shop grinning with fine handcrafted work, as well as a year-round program of classes and activities. People of all ages come to learn how to make things, from drawings and paintings to decorative garden sculptures. We are all born with an innate desire to express ourselves, and art plays a greater role in our lives than most people think. The Coast Collective Art Center is operated by the Society for Arts on the South Island and delivers a range of valuable cultural services to one of the fastest-growing regions of British Columbia. Although culture is recognized as one of the pillars of sustainable development, cultural funding on the West Shore has failed to keep pace with regional growth. This is despite studies recommending investment in the arts as good for public health, stimulating urban revitalization, and driving cultural tourism that's known to deliver twice the return on investment offered by score. The 2002 Regional Arts Strategic Plan commissioned by the CRD demonstrated that the West Shore was already struggling with an arts infrastructure deficit at that time. Colwood's Summer 2007 Futures Forum provided an opportunity for the municipality to reach out, connecting with taxpayers to learn about their community planning priorities, including the arts and culture. Public consultations would yield dramatic results. The West Shore lacked a home for the arts or even a viable plan to produce one, despite having more artists per capita than anywhere else in the country. No early arts events that have drawn visitors to Vancouver Island for over 30 years. Public schools with in-demand arts programs, and inspired youth and elders with talent and energy to share for the betterment of their community. Countless opportunities to harness the benefits of the arts and culture were being missed by one of the fastest-growing regions of the province. Colwood has gone on to invest annually in the arts, including professional consulting work to determine the viability of a theater and performing arts center. That project was also going to include a public art gallery and local artisan gift shop, as well as multi-purpose space suitable for classes in the visual arts. Unfortunately, such an integrated arts vision was not to be. Community arts infrastructure was quietly taken off the table by the city a couple of years ago, and no regional plans exist to develop an arts component through West Shore Parks and Recreation. Fortunately, the 2007 Futures Forum had also connected local arts leaders with the new owners of the Havenwood Estate next to Royal Rhodes University. It was a turning point for the arts on the West Shore. The Calgary Basin Resort developer recognized the economic value of the arts and was eager to help solve the area's cultural venue woes. Vacant and vulnerable historic spaces were transformed into the Coast Collective Art Center. It quickly became a popular visitor destination, where local arts and culture were celebrated for seven joyous years. The Coast Collective anchored popular community events, which grew an entirely new audience from near and far to discover the city of Colwood. It was a great temporary fix for a region teeming with culture and no permanent place to showcase it. Sassy's arrangement to have the Coast Collective Art Center at Pendray House served the public very well. In exchange for providing free caretaking services for the developers' 12 acres, the nonprofit Coast Collective had permission to use the property, provided it covered all the costs except the property taxes. They were incredibly enterprising and were able to grow and build a thriving community of studio artists, art gallery, gift shop, as well as host classes and outdoor events which successfully animated the site and built its value as a regional destination for the arts, culture, and community. Once Pacific Landing had obtained a development permit, it was clear that a construction zone was not going to provide the Coast Collective with the traffic needed to survive on an earned income. Sassy undertook an extensive search for a new home, which included Colwood, Langford, and View Royal, ultimately finding a fifth of Len and Lloyd Wansborough of Westridge Landing. Relocation would represent a considerable cost, even with the new space being completed by Westridge Landing. A centrally-located storefront came at a price, so adjustments would need to be made to Sassy's business plan, and its members would need to ratify the big changes at a special general meeting, or ought to close the Coast Collective for good. The society's membership would vote unanimously to restructure, double their membership fees, and relocate the Coast Collective to the main floor of the new Holiday and Expressing Suites. It took a truly community-spirited collaboration between the arts and private enterprise to craft this solution. The Coast Collective provides community cultural services that would not otherwise be available to the region, yet presently receives only 5% of its funding from grants and donations. Contrast this with municipal support for sports and recreation. West Shore Parks and Recreation could not exist without having 40% of their operating costs covered by West Shore municipalities. Despite the value of their work, only once over the past 30 months did the Coast Collective staff receive even a fraction of a minimum wage for the services they provide the people of the West Shore. Their personal contributions, along with those of the Wansburrows, have made it possible to establish a community arts center in Colwood. Their collective commitment to community arts and culture is steadfast and deeply rooted in the vision and values outlined in the City of Colwood's official community plan. A more sustainable solution is needed to fund the center's operations moving forward. So far this year, the Coast Collective is making cultural services more accessible than ever because of the unwavering commitment of its members, staff, and the owners of Westridge Landing. Over 2,000 more people have visited the Coast Collective at their new location than visited Pendray House over the same eight-month period in 2015. Given the chance, the community is clearly eager to support the arts and local talent. Very recently, the Society for Arts on the South Island secured its first community gaming grant, backed by letters of support from five West Shore mayors. This will go a long way toward helping to cover some of the Coast Collective's overhead costs in 2017. But further financial support is needed for the Coast Collective to remain open in the year ahead. To that end, it is Sassy's hope that it will be granted a permissive tax exemption for the art center on Whale Road. This form of financial support will assist the Coast Collective with a funding obstacle it struggles to overcome. Although the Coast Collective provides regional arts services from its Colwood location, it is disqualified from applying for project and operating grants that other groups are able to capitalize on, because the City of Colwood does not contribute to the Capital Regional District's Arts Development Fund. It's not a level playing field, but the city can help. Precedent exists where Colwood has previously recognized the value of nonprofits and granted a permissive tax exemption to other organizations on Whale Road. The services provided by the Coast Collective are equally valuable to the public, and its application worthy of council's consideration. The Coast Collective Art Center animates the arts, proactively contributing to the health and wellness of the growing West Shore. It is important to remember that Health Canada acknowledges the importance of the arts in public health. Arts and culture contribute to at least seven of the 12 key determinants of health in this country. Activities as simple as observing artwork, watching creative demonstrations, gathering with other creative individuals, and participating in cultural events and classes contribute to public health and reduce the pressure on our healthcare system. The Coast Collective welcomes more than 15,000 people each year, works with schools and other nonprofits on community cultural projects, facilitates successful partnerships that develop the cultural landscape and serve tourism economic development in our region, and offers maker workshops and art classes each year for people of all ages, interests, and abilities. An active and visible art scene makes a region more interesting and also enhances the vibrancy and marketing appeal of Colwood and the West Shore. The arts and cultural offerings of a community are seriously considered when companies and workers are deciding where to relocate. The Coast Collective provides an authentic cultural hub for the urban revitalization of Colwood's town center. They work together with their Westridge Landing neighbors and community partners like Tourism Victoria, the West Shore Chamber of Commerce, West Shore Arts Council, and the City of Colwood itself. The Coast Collective showcases the work of hundreds of talented Vancouver Island artists and craftspeople. This puts over $200,000 per year into the local economy, before the economic spinoffs that happen when visitors to the Coast Collective spend time and money at other places nearby. The Coast Collective's dedicated membership and staff contribute over 5,000 hours of volunteer time each year. Their efforts advance the public arts and cultural priorities outlined in Colwood's official community plan. Thousands of these hours willing to skilled labor. Even if calculated at only $10 an hour, this represents an annual human resource contribution of over $50,000. Such an engaged community is a major key indicator of the value that the people of Colwood and the West Shore place on the arts. The loving commitment of volunteer time enriches the quality of life for our region's residents and the thousands of people who visit here in search of cultural experiences each year. The City of Colwood can contribute to cultural capacity building on the West Shore by investing in the Society for Arts on the South Island and granting a permissive tax exemption. The funds saved on the property tax portion of their lease will significantly reduce this important nonprofit's overhead and support healthy cultural development on the West Shore. Southern Vancouver Island has the richest talent pool of artists and craftspeople in the country. You can discover hundreds of them year-round at Colwood's Coast Collective, the West Shore's only community art center. Thank you.
Any questions from council to Ms. Moyer at this point? It does say in here that there was a letter included, but that was actually a cut-and-paste error in the agenda. I think, oh, do you? Yeah, I was just gonna say that we, you know, the permissive tax exemption has a process, and so...
We submitted our application.
Oh, so the application, that was one of my questions, the application's in and whatever. So with that, and a reporting back from our Director of Finance as we move forward.
Yes, your worship, and we will be moving forward quite quickly because we have various statutory deadlines that we have to meet. Whereas the grant, sorry, the permissive exemptions have to be approved after three readings and adoption by the end of October. So we're looking at bringing forward the permissive exemption applications by September 12th, the next council meeting, because you don't have one for the UBCM, that meeting's canceled, so.
So then perhaps, I mean, I'll allow for Counselor Martin's questions if it fits into what we're needing, but then perhaps a motion to refer to staff to get us the next information for September 12th.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions. This year, you received a $4,000 grant from the City of Colwood. Would you be anticipating that you wouldn't be asking for that grant next year, then?
That's correct.
And of the five municipalities that you mentioned in the West Shore, who else has given you a grant, and do you know the amounts?
In terms of funding that has come through...
Funding, yeah, through the municipalities.
It comes through the West Shore Arts Council, and it is then added to by the B.C. Arts Council. So group grants through there are contributed to by Highlands, Machosen, and principally Langford. So that covers the student art show that we do with the senior students, as well as the children's art show.
Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? So, motion please from council to refer to staff for next council meeting?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Now we jump into that correspondence requiring action. We have dealt actually with 5.1 already in the earlier presentation. We also have a letter from the Canadian Cancer Society with a request to endorse the society's recommendation for the B.C. government to expand the scope of B.C.'s Tobacco and Vapor Product Control Act to prohibit use in outdoor public places province-wide.
Second.
All those, or any comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? There's also 5.3, a letter from Mayor Lisa Helps in regards for her broadcasted request for councils to consider advocacy in writing to the federal government to request that they decline the Trans Mountain Pipeline project application. Council's wish and direction?
Move to receive.
Second.
Comments, questions? Counselor Day? And then...
Thanks. With receipt, that would mean that we were not writing a letter, and I feel that it has been strongly supported at UBCM to oppose pipelines, because pipelines generally tend to lead to tanker traffic in our waters, and there's far more at risk. So I guess I will be voting against receiving it, only because I would like to see us write the letter. And Counselor Knoll?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Day on that matter. Victoria makes a very powerful statement... Victoria makes a very powerful statement for the reasons that this project is not in the public good. I believe that Callwood should be submitting a letter to the Prime Minister asking them to deny. So I will be support, not supporting the motion to receive.
Any others? Counselor Chung?
Thank you. I'm also on the same ship. I think that the potential risks are way too large and I would hate to see more tanker traffic and potentially a marine spill. Thank you.
Any others? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Opposed it is. The motion to receive has failed.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second. Any further comments, questions? Counselor Martin?
This is the ultimate in overreach. This has nothing to do with municipal governance. Nothing. This has to do with federal and provincial legislation and UBCM and FCM are the avenues that this should get addressed. This should not be addressed by specific municipalities. And that's part of the reason why I refused to, or I asked for the motion just to receive and I certainly wouldn't be supporting a letter.
Counselor Knoll?
Yes, actually, the public hearings on this item took place over the summer. I believe council got exactly one week's notice that councils were going to be asked to make submission to that public hearing. There was no opportunity for council to have a meeting to formulate a council position. So this is definitely going to affect municipalities, any municipality that has any oceanfront at all. So I disagree with Counselor Martin that it's not a municipal affair.
Counselor Daye?
And I would just like to point out that it will be our citizens who would be the volunteers who'd be cleaning up the beaches and suffering the consequences, including to our economy, if something should happen to spoil the waters. In our beautiful coastline, there's very little that can or would be effective in cleaning that up other than many, many, many volunteer hours.
Can I follow up? I want to be, I want to be very clear. I'm not talking about the principle of are we supportive, not supportive of the oil pipeline. What I'm talking about is the role of a municipal council. And the role of municipal council is not to address this this way. The role of a municipal council is to address it through UBCM and FCM. That's what I'm saying. And I want to be very clear that I, this has nothing to do with the policy of oil or pipelines and going through our waters. I just think that this is a classic concept of overreach.
And I'm just going to follow up with, we've had a few requests in the past where obvious resolutions that are coming forward at AVICC or UBCM have been circulated in advance, looking for pre-support. And, you know, I believe that the conversation needs to be on the delegates' floor at UBCM or AVIC, as the case may be, where the resolutions rise to, so that has the greater voice happening, not these one-offs that seem to be all of a sudden surfacing with great regularity. So I agree, although I have great concern over how they're managing the whole pipeline process for a number of reasons, this simple, you know, letter writing, I don't think addresses anything. It doesn't get us off the hook. Counselor Daye?
Sorry, I'm trying not to overly engage, but I just have to say that I feel very strongly that it is our job to represent our community and the hearings have been held. They ask for submissions from municipal councils. So for that reason, I think there is a voice here and a reason for that voice. And I do understand also and can quite relate to the argument that when we belong to an association like AVICC and FCM, there is definitely, you know, we need to have that discussion on the floor and have the resolution that comes forward carry as much weight as possible. But I think that especially where the federal government is concerned, we have to speak up for our shoreline.
Any further? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Moving on to the next one, letter owner-occupant at 739 Grosswood Place. They are looking for, let me get into that one, goats. Looking to keep. Letter received from the owner dated August 16th regarding keeping of miniature goats on residential properties when reviewing... Oh, okay, so we have an upcoming review of all submissions and whatever in our OCP planning. I'm not sure how many, I didn't capture the number of goats on this property or anything else. We don't have any rules or provisos in our bylaws at this time. Council?
If I may, Madam Mayor, I believe that this is following on the experiment that's being done in Sanich for using goats to control weeds and invasive plants where they are in fact doing a trial. And I think that it would be a very good thing, as per the staff recommendation, for us to discuss the idea of keeping miniature goats when we're looking at reviewing our OCP because we will be speaking to the neighbours and we can get feedback from the community on whether or not they feel that that's appropriate. I find it kind of humorous because I looked up on top of my shop this morning and there was, I don't know, goose duck, you take your pick, a rather large bird on the top of my shop from the little hobby farm next door to me. And I, it was just very interesting. So I think little goats, as long as they can be contained from my perspective, sounds like a good idea. Let's talk to the community about it. So I would move the staff recommendation.
Any further discussions?
Sorry, not that I have a question. My, my, it doesn't have a staff recommendation.
So it says here that staff be directed to review and consider the letter from the owner-occupant of 739 Grosswood dated August 16th regarding the keeping of miniature goats on the residential property when reviewing submissions made in and during the official community plan and land use bylaw update.
Yeah.
Are we good? Staff?
Your Worship, I think the appropriate direction is what council has suggested or directed us, which is to push this out to the OCP. However, the property owner intends to, I'm going to say board the goats temporarily over winter at her, at her property. So we have really two issues. One is we don't currently have regulations in place that permit specifically goats in residential areas, which we can address in the OCP and subsequently through zoning. But in the meantime, we've got this immediate issue that's going to come up. So I think there's a risk. I don't know if it's a risk, but there is, I'm trying to think of the word here. We can turn a blind's eye to the goats showing up on her property, but if we receive multiple complaints from the neighbourhood, we'll have to address it. And at that time, council can address it either by saying we're not going to enforce our bylaws on this specific issue, or you can force them to remove the goats. Neither of those events need to take place tonight, but I'm just giving you a heads-up that the applicant, I think, is expecting to board these goats over winter at her, at her property.
And it's difficult to make decisions based on the information at hand because we have no idea of how number of goats and all that sort of thing. So I would, you know, figure that if staff were looking at this, more information could be brought forward. Counselor Daye?
So I'm, I'll just, I see our staff letting me know that it's two goats. But I live next door to little goats who are grandfathered in on the hobby farm. They are right on my property line and I can honestly say they make no noise, they cause no problems. So I, from my perspective, I don't see it as being an issue. There may be situations where it is an issue. And I would say that we're probably wise to look at what the possible benefits are, much like backyard chickens or the other things that we have looked at doing. Anything reasonable, I think, to control invasive plants is a step in the right direction.
So can we hire them for parks?
Boulevard?
Yeah, boulevard. It's a lot more, seriously, that's it, yeah? Yeah.
Um, so we have the staff direction before us and do we need to add in to this at all? If it's, you know, to have some dialogue with the proponent on this around that, maybe like Sanich is on a, on a trial, you know, might be good information going forward in our OCP review to, you know, get the befores and afters, what, you know, what effect did they have on the property if the, if the intent was nasty weeds and that sort of thing.
Your Worship, goats were used for weed control on Mid-Island for several years now. It's been pretty effective.
So, um, I'm not seeing any add-on here, so I'm just going to go with the recommendation that's there. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 5.5, letter with, from Paul Nursey, President and CEO of Tourism Victoria, request for a letter of support from Callwood for the 2019 IIHF World Hockey Championship to Vancouver and Victoria. This came to me in the summer and I forwarded it into staff so that council could weigh in and understand what's at play here. It's simply a letter. There's no money attached to this one, for anything. What's your direction?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Any questions?
Thank you. I spoke to West Shore Park and Rack. They are supportive of it and they have been in discussions with Victoria about possibly using the Q Centre. I mean, I would ideally like the letter to somehow also include that we would like to get something out here if, you know, part of our support is that, that games would be scheduled or at least practices at the Q Centre as well. So I'm not sure if...
So the sample letter?
Does it include that?
That's in that, in here, says that Greater Victoria is a proven hockey town, region was named Craft Hockeyville, home to five minor hockey. We kind of go through what's been happening, Canadian Roying Team, Pacific Institute for Sports Excellence, other events that have been held, HSBC, Canadians Women Sevens, Scotties Tournament of Hearts, Canadian Figure Skating Champions, and I'm sure we probably could come up with some more. This was just kind of a sample letter that we quickly drafted off.
Sure.
Does that work? Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? New business planning and land use rezoning application, 476 Goldstream Avenue. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. The applicant here is proposing to develop the majority of the 900-square-meter site as park and relocate the historic Callwood Dairy Building to a heritage park fronting Goldstream Avenue. As part of the process, the applicant would be required to undertake the restoration of the building, subdivide a land parcel that would incorporate the Callwood Dairy and the dedicated park area and transfer ownership of the land and dairy building to the city. Staff are recommending that the requirement for a contribution of a thousand dollars per unit to the Community Amenity Fund be removed from the amended Comprehensive Development 19, CD 19 zone. We had some discussions and the plan that was, there was some uncertainty in terms of how many units are proposed for the site. The plan that was before us did show 194 units, whereas the staff recommendation had mentioned that the applicant is looking for a reduction of $158,000 to the Community Amenity Fund. We did have, just to give council a bit of background, of course, there was, there was one parcel that was rezoned a number of years ago with a requirement to move the Callwood Dairy to the front of the building and have it restored. Subsequent to that rezoning, the parcel right beside the rezoned land came up for sale. The applicant made an option and purchased it with the intention of consolidating the parcels. And after discussions with staff, the applicant saw the opportunities of purchasing what was a postage stamp-sized parcel that completed the, that property and through discussions with staff decided that perhaps a more prominent location, dedicated location, made sense. And the proposal was to actually move the Callwood Dairy to that new parcel of property. In essence, something that the developer didn't have to do, but thought that as a, as a community amenity, it was the right thing to do for the neighbourhood and for the municipality. Committee agreed. However, we had some discussion in terms of how much relief we should be giving from the Community Amenity Fund. Council at the end, or our committee at the end of the day recognised that there was a value moving the Callwood Dairy to, to its new prominent site and thought that a more reasonable amount of a hundred thousand dollar credit to the Community Amenity Fund would be most appropriate. It was recommended by committee in ISO move that, one, the staff prepare a zoning amendment bylaw that would include the subject property and an amended Comprehensive Development 19, CD 19 zone, that would exempt a maximum of $100,000 in total contributions to the Community Amenity Fund to offset the costs associated with the dedication of the Heritage Park. Two, that the subject property be subject to the provisions of the amended development agreement regarding 468 and 464 Goldstream Avenue. And finally, that a detailed landscape plan of the Heritage Park and anticipated operating costs of the Callwood Dairy as an interpretive centre be provided to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and report back to council prior to the public hearing.
Any further conversation discussion?
Through the chair to staff or whoever wants to answer. What happens if the report comes back saying that the dairy can't be moved? And then, like, I'm curious what would happen with the park? What would happen with the hundred thousand dollar offset? What would happen with everything?
Your Worship, consideration as to how the historic Callwood Dairy and Chisels building could be moved goes back to 2010 when the developer first came forward with the plans for development of 468 Goldstream. He engaged a house-moving company and actually got some quotes at that time. He also engaged a heritage consultant to do some preliminary work. Now, that preliminary work indicated that the building couldn't be moved without all, and retain all of the heritage aspects such as the very delicate brick floor in the building, but it indicated that it could be moved and restored to the national standards for such heritage restoration projects. And that's what was included in the Section 219 Development Agreement for that initial rezoning. So we're confident that it can be moved. It, no doubt, will lose some heritage value in terms of it being shifted over and also delicate aspects such as the floor may be modified, but we're confident that it can be moved.
So, but as to Director of Planning, what happens if a report comes back saying it can't? That's what I, I just want to understand what the consequences are. Would they still be allowed? Are they still getting a hundred thousand dollar offset? Are we still getting the park? What's happening if, if something along those lines happened?
Well, for sake of argument, if a report came back saying that the, the moving the structure would mean it... would mean it's alteration to a point where, say, the Director of Planning was not satisfied that this was meeting the intent of council, we would come back to council and explain the situation. Now, the development agreement that is being proposed would require that it be moved. So we don't expect that that be eventuality, but certainly, as I said, if there were unforeseen circumstances that meant that we felt that the city's intent was not being met, we would come back to council and broach that issue.
Any further questions? Recommendation before us, seconder we had? Any, all those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Rezone, our development variance permit application, DVP, for 3432, Resolution Y. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. Here, the applicant is requesting to vary Section 5.6.05, the land use bylaw number 151, increasing the maximum floor area ratio of the principal residence from .4 meters to .51 meters in order to create an additional living space in the principal building by essentially enclosing the existing garage. The proposed renovation will not require an increase to the building footprint and that the applicant is actually removing the existing legal suite and its kitchen to accommodate the required parking. Staff confirmed that there are no charges registered against the title that the city is party to, restricting the applicant's proposal, and that the renovation will be subject to scheduled inspections by a building inspector to ensure compliance with today's building code standards, addressing the comments made by the chief building inspector in his report. Essentially, the reason for this work, your worship, is that the owners wish to accommodate a family member in order to take care of them. And that's that. It was recommended by committee and I so moved the recommendation that's before us.
Conversation, discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Finance and administration, it's not a committier. We already fixed that. 6.2.1, report Director of Administration, council meeting scheduled for Monday, September 26. We have a recommendation and choice before us as that is UBCM date.
Move the recommendation?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? So be sure, folks, to mark your calendars that that meeting has been cancelled and a special meeting council will be called if business arising cannot wait. And that date will be tentatively scheduled for October the 11th. Back in here, I hate going back. I hit my back key and it... 2016 Christmas closure proposal.
Move the recommendation, your worship?
Comments, questions? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? That's very typical to the time of year. 6.2.3, memorandum engineering administrative supervisor, annual web place block party. We have already dealt with this on council. What we have before us is actually a change of date, folks, simply.
Move the recommendation, your worship?
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? 6.2.4, request for waiver of noise bylaw for Hopwood Resolution, annual block party for Sunday, September 4. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? Finally, in that section, we have Beach Food Fridays and Saturdays, event update. We have additional information that was provided to us at our stations. There are options within our recommendations, discussions, council. Yes, Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. Well, those of you that follow me on Twitter know that I am an enthusiastic supporter of Beach Food Fridays and that's just not from my own opinion and I frequented the event numerous times, but just gathering the input from people that have actually frequented Food Truck Fridays and Saturdays. And in fact, it's so popular that we had to add Saturdays and that tells you something. So I'm, you know, if the food trucks are still willing to come for a few more weeks during the good weather, I don't think there's any harm that we encourage them to do so. And, you know, we had some good feedback and this is our first year and I think there's tweaks that we can make. But, you know, I think we can ride it out. I mean, this is probably one of the most popular events that we've ever had, sustained events over the summer that we've ever had and which is a testament, you know, I think, to the hard work that staff have done to create an environment that is perfect. So I'm certainly willing to move option two.
Further discussion?
May I just make a...
Counselor Mark?
Okay, I'll just say what I want to say. I would just prefer option two that actually has a specific date. So we say that it's the last Saturday in September or whatever it is. I don't like this sort of big...
Weather permits?
By weather permitting, so I would just prefer to just say, okay. That way it gives a clear understanding to the vendors too, that they don't keep coming back and saying, well, no, the weather's supposed to be sunny on Saturday and bug in Corsica. I would rather have a drop dead date personally.
We don't want you to drop dead. Well, I'm okay with making maybe the end of September the date for now and it's usually a good month that we can evaluate. Is it? Okay, October 1st, perfect. There we go, October 1st.
I just, this is an event, an event that's really weather dependent. If the weather's not nice, people don't come. So that was why we left a little flexibility in terms of whether if we get a terrible spell for two weeks and we have vendors sitting there with no one around.
So maybe it's weather permitting to conclude October 1st.
Thanks.
And then that covers off both aspects. Counselor Day?
I think that it has been a very successful event and I do think there are some tweaks that we need to make to make it better, to make people more aware of the surroundings that they're in. Some of the lovely pictures that we have, you know, we have electric equipment set up in the dune grass, right? So that's maybe not the best way to do that. So, and we need to work on ensuring that we put something in our budget for creating that awareness and creating some signage. Elsie's had some good recommendations over the years for different types of signage that can be put up or barriers that have been erected when they were planting the dune grass. Maybe we need to get some of that back. There's quite a list in some of the feedback that we've received and I'm sure that we can do something with it. So I'm really looking forward to when staff bring the final report because I'm sure that our staff are going to take all of that into account and come up with the workarounds for the little things that didn't quite work out. You know, maybe it needs to be more acoustic after a certain time or something. But I leave that to staff to figure out, but I'm just very aware that we do need to do some things. But I think that we also need to remember to, in order to really build on this and make it a place that we love and not a place that we love to death, that we have to plan for putting the protection in place for it.
And just to follow up on that, Gail had a comment there about having a, you know, sort of opportunity public before the final report came in. And I know our little mix and mingle that we had, you know, previous was quite highly successful. Maybe this could be something similar with a focus, you know, on how you felt about the Beach Food Fridays and weekend event things and that kind of thing. So just throwing that out there. Counselor Nolte?
Yes, I supported this as an experiment and it seems to have been a very successful experiment. We've had overwhelmingly positive comments, although the negative comments are something we should also be listening to, particularly traffic control, trash, noise. And the comments from Kitty Lloyd, the Esquimalt Lagoon stewardship coordinator, that we very poorly chose the original location as being on one of the research plots that was for dune grass restoration. That has been totally trampled now. Next time we do this, we should pay a little more care in where we locate it. I've heard comments further down where the lagoon is wider might be better, but that puts you a long distance from the washrooms, a lot of trade-offs. And the other thing I want council to really consider when this comes before us again that this is a bird sanctuary and we should be doing what we can to minimize this event's impact on the bird sanctuary. Summertime is not really an important time for that. It's a migratory bird sanctuary. The majority of birds are after September and early spring. So if it's impacting the Canada geese, they're so much better. So I will be supporting this and I eagerly look forward to the staff report and suggestions on fixes on the compliance.
Great. With that, we'll wrap it up. All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? That concludes our regular section. We are now into bylaws and we have a mess of them ahead of us, so... Pardon? Be nice? Be slow, you mean? Okay, so it had been asked, and I just want to qualify, it had been asked, could we accommodate these and collaborate them together? But that's not possible regulation-wise. We have to deal with them one-on-one. So be patient with me, folks. So we're going to start this and I'll read it through methodically. So bylaw number 1649, I require first, second, and third readings.
Move introduction?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? One down. Bylaw number 1629, again, first, second, and third readings?
Move first reading?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third reading?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? Item 7.3, bylaw number 1630, again, first, second, and third readings?
Move introduction?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1631, again, first, second, and third readings? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second?
All those, or any conversation, discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1632, first, second, and third readings?
Move introduction?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? 7.6, bylaw number 1633, first, second, and third readings?
Move first reading?
All those in favor? Opposed?
Move second?
Second?
Any conversation? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1634, first, second, and third readings?
Move introduction?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1635, first, second, and third readings?
Move first reading?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1636, first, second, and third?
Move introduction?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second, second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1637, first, second, and third?
Move first reading?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1638, first, second, and third readings? Nope, 1637, did I skip? 638?
638? Move first reading?
Second?
711?
And all those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1639, first, second, and third?
Move first?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1640? First, second, and third?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Third?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1641, first, second, and third?
Move first?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
We need to take a break. Gordy's getting overheated.
Second, second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Bylaw number 1642, first, second, and third?
Move introduction?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried?
Move second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? To be clear, we're on 16, bylaw number 1643, first, second, and third readings?
Move first?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
I'm gonna be checking the minutes to make sure that Marcy got the right movers and seconders on all these...
Yeah, you were making notes, I can tell. But...
Move first?
Bylaw number 1644, first, second, and third readings?
A second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1645, first, second, and third readings?
Second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second, second?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Move third?
Second, third?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1646, first, second, and third?
Move first reading?
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries?
Second?
Move second? Sorry, what?
Second, second?
All those in favor? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried?
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carries? Bylaw number 1647, first, second, and third?
Move first?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried?
Move third?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Look at that. No, one more here. 1648, bylaw number 1648, first, second, and third?
Move first, second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? And I just want to be clear, recorder? You've got them all the way through? I just want to make sure that we didn't miss anything. With that, we concluded our in-camera. There was nothing to release. All those in favor? Motion carried?